Good evening and welcome to the Monday, March 10, 2014 Board of Education meeting. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start the formal part of the meeting, I do want to just acknowledge and express the board's condolences to Mike Graziano, our camera person, or the person who's diligently filmed these meetings for many, many years as Dad passed away. The Bill Graziano, a former teacher at the high school here, a woodshop teacher and a department head. And we, a valued member of the Guilford education community for many, many years. And while we appreciate, we did offer to have coverage for Mike, but Mike being a very dedicated person who hasn't, I don't think has missed a meeting since I've been around anyway, so we want to express all of our condolences, Mike, and let us know if we can do anything. I do, I wanted to switch things around a little bit. There is a, for those of you who are paying any attention at all, there is a state basketball playoff game tonight, and our student representatives are very kindly here instead of there, as is Mr. Messeny, but I think that they have lobbied me to say if we could move up the parts of the agenda where they would be participating. That would be both the Student Representatives Report, item seven, and the Superintendent's Report, in part the update on smarter balanced assessments at the high school, and a report of the parent meeting involving Mr. Messeny. If we could do that now and excuse them and allow them to go to the basketball game, that seems fine with me, if that's okay with the rest of you. So, do you want to start off?
Excuse me, can we join them?
No, that's cost of the job here. We have to skip that, but it was you, Mr. Kayzen said it was 23-23 at last report, so we'll...
Just moments ago.
Wow.
Two minutes left and...
All right, so we'll try to get you there easily by the third quarter and hopefully before, or fourth quarter, but maybe before. So anyway, do you want to give us your reports, item seven, Student Representative Reports?
Sure, I'll start it off with things happening in the high school. First off, we had the signing of the beam, which was the last beam to actually go up at a brand-new high school. We had every of the kids in the lunchways come out and become a part of the new high schools. We may not be here, all of us sadly, but will be a part of it. And then, as we'll hear later, we have CAP testing Wednesday. And then the following two weeks, the juniors and sophomores will be taking smarter balance. And there's a lot of buzz around the school about that. And then, third, the voice to showcase was this month, and that was fantastic, really nice job. As we know, basketball play, the basketball state playoff games right now, but we've also had a lot more exciting things happen. The girls hockey team went to the championship. Sadly, they lost by a goal, but it was a great effort, great game. And we've had four Class M state championship wrestlers, Jake Wernberg, Brendan Holloway, Colin Rook, and Andrew Egnoto. So, great job to all the guys, and three of them taking all SEC awards as well. And lastly, actually not last, we have spring sports are starting. Lacrosse conditioning was today for me. I'm very tired. And then, the musical is the last weekend of March, and this is going to be good. It's all shook up, it's all Elvis songs, and you can see him in it if you want to go. And that's all that's happened in the high school this month.
At Guilford Lakes, the PTO has been doing a lot. They sponsored the Science Investigations Fair, which had over 80 participants this year. And they're also working with Mrs. Kathy Brooks, a science consultant, to set up monthly science lessons that are aligned within national science standards and our curriculum, their curriculum. They're starting their elementary unified sports program, which we have at the high school as well. And that's a program for special ed students and their peers to participate in sports. And there's a six-week training program, and then the Spring Elementary Unified Sports Day on Saturday, April 5th, they'll be attending that. And at Melissa Jones, the Yale Theater Groups just performed recently, so that was a big event for them. And the children are running a pennies-for-leukemia drive, and so far have about $400. And tomorrow night, they will be holding their math night for parents and students, which Guilford Lakes had last month. And that's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I add one thing, actually?
Yeah, go ahead.
To the number of winning sports happening around here, the fencing team on Saturday, the girls fencing team, oh, I'm sorry, I stole your thunder. Oh, I'm sorry, I have nothing to add.
I just want to note that Stevie Hall is one of the co-presidents of the junior class and is sitting in for our junior representative today, as the next item is about smarter balance and Mr. Messenti's parent meeting with parents of sophomores and juniors here last week.
Okay, do you want to turn to that now, then? Is your...
I'd be happy to turn it right over to Mr. Messenti.
Thank you, Mr. Ballast Stracey. The girls foil and epi teams won the state championship on Saturday, so that was, it was an all-day event. It was late in the afternoon when they came through and won the state championship. That's probably like four out of the last seven years where those teams have won state championships, so we're real proud of them. The boys team finished in the top five, one team top seven, but they're remarkable, have a great coaching staff. And our robotics team competed in their first competition at Fitch High School, and they came in, there were 30 teams from around the state and outside of the state, and they came in the top three. So, I think they travel to Springfield next, and then Hartford at the end of the month, which is always a lot of fun to follow. So, you guys did a good job, and those were like late, late things that happened, so I appreciate, though, you sharing with everybody what happened. And Steve, congratulations for being selected to come here tonight. I know it's a, I know you're loving it. He's a great, he's in our theater arts program, and he's got to be done on his feet as well. I mean, they're rehearsing nonstop, and he does a great job with our, in our school. So, on May 3rd, we had a parent meeting to talk about a number of things, not just smarter balance, but I invited our parents in grades nine through 11 to come to our auditorium and meet with me and some other of our staff members to talk about a number of things. We wanted to talk about Common Core. We really have not had that kind of conversation with our families since we began our go-year, and so we thought that was important, that we talk about the Common Core, you know, where it came from, where we are today as a school, as a district, what we still need to do, give some personal testimonies from our faculty about ways they plan and embed the Common Core state standards in their instruction and their lessons every day. So, we did that. Then we moved into CAP science, so our teachers have an overview of what's going to happen on this Wednesday, the 12th, as well as some background on why we're just doing CAP science and not math and reading and writing as well. So, we got into some conversation about it. And then we talked about the smarter balance, and a pilot test. We talked about why sophomores are taking it, why juniors are going to take it, and we didn't leave that evening until every question was answered by our panel. I presented, we had our administrative team present, they had each a small portion to discuss with our parents, whether it's the Common Core state standards, the actual smarter balance testing itself, or what the ninth graders are going to be doing during the smarter balance testing. We use that time to really focus on our civic and social goals and expectations for our students with our ninth graders. We do that every year when we offered CAP, and we're going to probably follow that same suit as we move forward to offer the smarter balance as well. There were a lot of questions early on, probably within the last couple of months to me, emails from probably five or six parents that regularly emailed me, and I thank them to this day. They pushed the envelope, they made me really think outside the box, they asked for nothing less than you would expect of your principal or your superintendent. And we were able to really put our heads together here. I have a faculty advisory council that I meet monthly with to talk about issues both in and outside our school. Our department chairman is our curriculum leadership group that I met with, our administrative team. I picked, you know, Aunt Dr. Keen, even though she was home for a long time, she was kind enough to take, field some questions as well. I mean, we look for every opportunity to accommodate the needs of all our students, and we came up with a testing week that we think really meets the needs of all our students in our, in our high school. I met with the junior class officers, of which Steve is part of. I met with the sophomore class officers last week to talk to them about the same issues that the parents heard. I met with our entire faculty last Wednesday and spoke to them about all the same issues and the message we wanted to deliver to the students and to our parents, so that we're all on the same page. I have 24 parents that have emailed me over the last month and a half, only maybe several over the last week, but most came early on wanting to opt out of the smarter balance, they're all junior parents. And I'm in the process right now of working on a letter with our district as well, where I can respond to the parents individually and let them know what I, the message I've shared with our parents as well during that March 3rd evening meeting. But it was a good meeting, I, we got some positive feedback. We had four teachers onstage with us as well. Three of them teach advanced placement, one is a, teaches our honors courses and regular ed courses as well. They were open to question and answers, and they also had a brief presentation where they talked about smarter balance and the, and the need to really hone in on it this year with our juniors, with our sophomores. They fielded questions really admirably, and they did a wonderful job. So, when the night was over, we had 89 parents attend, and you know, and I worried, I didn't think that many would come, and then I was hoping for more, you know? It would have been a great evening for us. We're going to truly try to make that a tradition here, that once a year, we bring everyone together, as Dr. Freeman talks about the state of our schools each year. We want to do that here as well, especially with deploying some of the new initiatives that we had. We even got to talk about the Performing Arts Academy a little bit that we're working on, and the International Baccalaureate Program as well, so that was nice. I opened the meeting, actually, with some pictures of the new high school, and that was really a lot of fun for me to have a conversation with them about what's happening out there. And I got to talk about what our juniors and seniors will be doing as it relates to the new high school. I think you already know that. The architect and the builders and the superintendent have agreed to build time capsules into the school for our juniors and seniors, so that they can put some memorabilia in those time capsules, seal it with their, with a class shield, with a note that says not to be opened until they make the decision, they can come back for their reunions and break those time capsules open. So, you know, for as many years as they want, our students and staff will be walking by these time capsules, remembering the class of 2014 and 15. So, we had an opportunity to discuss that. And then, as I said, we didn't let a question go unanswered. And you know, there were questions that were, you know, really backed me up on my heels in terms of, well, what are you going to do if I don't send my student to school for that test, to, you know, to tell me why we should be doing it. So, we were able to answer all of those. Our teachers didn't sit back and just present, they answered as well. They were very powerful, very, very powerful, our teaching staff, in terms of how they responded. Because, you know, the smarter balance test is aligned to the Common Core state standards, and this is going to be an unbelievable gauge for this high school staff and for our students to see just where they are with not just the Common Core state standards, but with the technology that's going to be out there as well. I planned, I share with the parents that I plan on doing exit survey with our students. It's an exit survey that I'm really going to count on my assistant superintendent to review very closely, because there are some really fine guidelines on what you can share about smarter balance and what you can't share. But I need to come away with a very clear understanding from our juniors especially, what frustrations they had, what things they really navigated very well with, and some of the things we still have to work on. The sophomores are taking this again. This will be the second time they've taken a smarter balance test. Last year, they took a pilot test, this year the field test. Next year, it's for real. It is a graduation requirement. We don't know what that requirement will be, other than they are going to be required to take smarter balance next year, and that's what we know. And I've got to make sure that when the sophomores leave this year, they are comfortable with this. And selfishly, for our juniors, they're testing that first week in part, because if there are already problems with batteries dying or systems crashing, I want to know about it now, so that when our sophomores get behind that computer, they feel good about themselves when they leave here this year, and next year they come in, back to school with the right, the right frame of mind. When I met with our class officers, I didn't try to disguise anything. I told them, they're testing the test, that's what they're doing. You know, I guess I could make some things up, and I can make it sound really, really good. I tried that about a month ago, and then things kept changing, I stopped that, and I just, I call it like it is. They are testing the test. And I said to them this, I said, you know, many classes before you improve the quality of life at this high school, why can't you do that for the classes that will follow? For example, they use cell phones during lunch. That just didn't happen. That happened early on in my tenure, when classes came to me and people asked, can we do this? And you had class officers that really came forward to try to improve the lunch period here and kind of find some middle ground for using cell phones. So, they did that. Another group of class officers came to me and said, why can't we have senior breakfast off-campus? So, we looked at it, we explored it, and we ended up doing it. And so, now they spend a day at Woodwinds, and they get their yearbooks and their entertainment, and it's a wonderful event, instead of going down to the school cafeteria for 45 minutes, eating a bagel, a banana, and going back to class. They spent a day, and a class did that for them. And then you had another class come forward and change a Board of Education policy, or not change it, eliminate it, which requires us to have a junior prom and a gym. So, now they're going to...
Bill Miller.
Bill Millers, you know, for their junior prom. So, I said, why can't you do that for smarter balance? Why can't you do that for an academic reason, a curricular reason, for your faculty, for the kids? What's wrong with that? You've done it for cell phones, you've done it for senior breakfast, you've done it for a junior prom, why not do this for the other kids that are coming up? This is big for these sophomores. They're going to be taking the most rigorous test they've probably ever taken, more so than CAP. So, we approached it that way as well. And, you know, Steve in particular had some comments, as well as the others that were there. And you know what? Some of it's, it's real. You know, some of the kids will just say, why? All the juniors and seniors before had to do that, you know, could stay home and sleep in. Why can't I? It's my turn this time. I get it, I get it. But I also get that I'm not going to be turning this into something punitive, and then that's a fact. You know, I, as their principal, I told our students especially, and I told our parents, you're expecting me to follow your policies and procedures, we have a federal mandate to the state, now to our local government, to our superintendent, that we will administer this to 11th graders. You should expect nothing less from me. Anything less from me is negligence. And I told our students this, and I told our parents this, and I'm going to do that. And if Steve decides he's going to stay home that day, he decides to stay home. There's no detentions, there's no suspensions. Will I look at him differently? No, I do that anyway. I look at him differently every day. I won't do that. But I've always with this student body, when I told them the way it is, what the expectation is, and I've asked them for their help, they've come through. You know, do I expect some kids to stay home? Yeah, I do. And I'm embarrassed as your high school principal to tell you that, that some will just do it. And I also expect a very good number to come and help their other classmates out, and help their faculty out to test this test. One big issue the parents, a group of parents came to me about was the AP test, the AP piece. At first, they were worried that we were taking away instructional time from AP, and that, you know, why, why would you have to do this in March, Mr. Messenti? Why can't you do it the week after AP testing? It's, it's open. Why can't you do it after, in June sometime? Another high school in the state does it that way. And we looked into all of that, and I put a number of heads together to look at all of that. If the truth be known, every year we do this. Every year during CAP, juniors and seniors come in late, so AP students are missing some instructional time during their regular class period. But every year, they get two hours of extra practice and help at AP. And this year, they're actually getting two and a half hours, because smarter balance is 30 minutes longer on a particular day where they have to issue a, or do a performance standard. So, the AP kids are picking up 30 extra minutes than they've, than they've had in the past. Then they talked about, you know, came to me about psychological things, you know, testing, really the, you know, just feeling uncomfortable about so many tests. And I didn't trivialize those comments, you know? I went to people in this building that work with stress every day with kids, and talked to them about stress. This is a non-stressful test. There's nothing at stake here, nothing, there's no recording of individual grades or names or, or nothing's forwarded to colleges. This is a test the test, you do what you can. And, and, and I'm, and the state is expecting a participation rate for me, which we don't know what that is yet, but it's, they, they expect that. So, you do the best you can. So, you know, we were prepared at the parent meeting to talk about stress. We have a new coordinator for special education, a former school psychologist, who feels really strong in that area. We didn't even discuss it at the parent meeting, because we really felt from their feedback and the questions they asked, I think they went away with a better understanding of what we're trying to do here. I think our student body has gone away with a better understand, our student leaders. I haven't said anything on the intercom yet about smarter balance, because I want to get through Wednesday. Wednesday's CAP science for our 10th graders. So, I want to get through that first, and then I'll be on the intercom. I've got a co-president of a junior class that suggested, you know, Mr. Messeny, now that you've called me in, or you've, you've described this, I feel better about it, I think you should get on the intercom. I think you, they should hear your voice, do it during the middle of the day when all the kids are here, they're not late to school. You know, we have juniors and seniors that have first period off, they have study hall. So, wait till they get here, get on the intercom, and just tell like it is. And you know what? I just might do that. I just might get on that intercom right after CAP, maybe Thursday, Friday, and talk to the entire student body of what we're doing. Tonight, all the sophomores, all the freshmen and sophomores are getting phone calls from me. I just sent the message out about Wednesday, what the expectations are. Tonight, all the juniors and seniors are, tomorrow night, the juniors and seniors will be getting a phone call from me about Wednesday coming in late. I'll tell you another thing that our parents don't know, and I, and you're hearing it for the first time, senior class officers came to me last week, Mr. Messeny, we would like on Wednesday, now this is CAP Wednesday, when they can sleep in, we would like to have a senior assembly. We would like to distribute senior t-shirts, we would like to vote on our senior speakers at graduation, we would like to have graduates come back and talk about life after Guilford High School. So, then the advisors join them, and so they're all in my office. I couldn't think of anything wrong with this. I thought, you've got to be kidding me. And so, I played devil's advocate. I'm sleeping in. You know, I, and I still want my t-shirt. Don't you hold that over me if I don't want to come in. They'll get their t-shirts at the end of the day when they come in, if they don't want to come for this, for this assembly. And the senior class officers, after I, you know, kind of picked their brain a little bit, they said, you know what? Let's meet everyone in the middle. Let's do this at 8:30, so that seniors can still sleep in, and let's still have our assembly, 8:30 to 9:30. They have four to six graduates coming back to speak to them, they've got some senior talent, where someone's going to sing and play an instrument, they're going to distribute their class t-shirts, they're going to vote on their, the teachers that read their names. This was all on their own. This was on a testing day when they could sleep in, and they're going to have an assembly just to meet one, one more time as a senior class, and that's admirable. And so, I'm counting on and hoping and expecting our junior class to rise to the same, you know, occasion. You have three students here, nothing's been scripted for them, they, this is, they've heard this from me, I haven't told them how to respond to any questions you might have for them. Might be nice for you to ask some questions of them, because they'll tell you like it is too. You know, I'd have my head buried in the sand if I didn't think there were students out there that said, you know, I've been waiting for this week to sleep in. But I'm really just appealing to their sense of community, their sense of loyalty to their school, their sense of, you know, doing what's right, in this particular case. And when I say that, I say that, and I hesitate a little bit, because in their minds, what they're doing is right. And I don't want to trivialize that either. These are good kids, and, and some of the feedback I got from my parent meeting were from parents who said, you know, I, I was going to tell my son or daughter to stay home, and I'm not going to do that now. And I think we've all agreed to disagree at times, but I can tell you that the parents that have written me, especially the five or six that were writing to me weekly, they pushed the envelope, and I wouldn't want it any other way. The last thing you want is a complacent principle, and they made sure I wasn't, and that was a good thing. So, with that, kind of just open up to any questions you have. We have smarter balance coming up Wednesday, then next week, the testing window opens on Tuesday, not Monday, for smarter balance.
CAP'd on Wednesday. CAP science.
CAP science on Wednesday, then smarter balance Tuesday through Friday of next week for juniors, and the following week, Monday through Thursday, for the sophomores. Freshmen will be coming in all week long for both weeks, and we have social and civic goal activities that we do with them. We work with Youth and Family Services, we have a couple outside presenters coming in as well, and they'll be working with our counseling staff as well for the two weeks, for the eight days of testing. So, that's where we are. 10th graders this Wednesday, juniors next week, beginning Tuesday, and then the sophomores the following, Monday through Thursday. All the classes meet each day, we just, there are 30, 31 minutes, I think, in length, where last year they were 34 minutes, but there, there's a piece in smarter balance that's longer, so our day will be a few minutes shorter. But we picked up a half hour with our AP kids, in terms of extra work. And I want you to know, when I looked at other parts of the calendar for the AP kids, you know, the time in June that some parents were telling me other schools around the state were using, they're on different calendars than us. They actually end later than us, and now with the snow days, they're even later, so it worked for them. For us, that week after AP exams, there is nothing, and that was a perfect week, I looked at it. But within three and a half weeks after that, we have final exams, we have end of quarter four exams. We've got 800 other kids that will be testing, that are not AP kids in this school, that need to pass their final exams. And so, when I, when I, when people with genuine, real concerns were looking at and questioning my reasoning for offering smarter balance when I did, a month and a half before AP exams, like we always have done, always, they were asking me just to maybe look at doing smarter balance weeks before a final exam for 800 other kids. I just couldn't do that. And, but they, I know they understand, but it was, but I wouldn't have even looked at that had they not asked me to do that or pushed my envelope. So, I really thank them for that. And it's probably some of the best professional conversations I've had with parents and families in a long, long time. We were all on the same page of trying to do something good for kids. It was really neat.
Why don't we ask the students a couple of questions? And I think probably this is one area where there are genuine, honest differences of opinion and good faith, and there are differences, people can have different views, and there, there are lots of areas in public education where there's no perfect answer, and this may be, this may be one of them. But what, you mentioned, Mr. Trotta, a little bit about the, there was chatter, I think, is the word you used around the school. What's, what's the chatter?
Well, a lot of the chatter has actually been around, can you be exempted from this test? And there have been some false accusations on social media, like, oh, go to this website, you could be exempted if you put your name and all your information down. Those are fake websites. So, the kids who did that, they're getting nothing. They've been told that that's not the right way to do it, and that they should really come and take this test. So, administration's done a good job of dismissing a lot of these kind of falsehoods, so. Otherwise, it's kids, you know, like, ah, I want to sleep in. They'll get over it. They'll tough it out.
Steve, you, you're the co-president of the junior class?
Yeah.
All right. Well, so you've got some...
I am, I am a junior at Guilford High School, and I am taking the test, the smarter balance test. Three weeks ago, I had no idea what it was or why we were taking it. I had known that I took CAP last year, and was resenting the fact that I had to take smarter balance. But last week, Mr. Messenti called me into his office and explained to me what smarter balance was and why we were taking it, and the reasons for us taking it. And I think that I had a better understanding leaving that meeting of why this was necessary for our junior class to kind of pave the way for classes to come. I think that a lot of the resentment and a lot of the frustration that is coming from the students and from the parents is because of the fact they just don't know what it is. And I think that we have a fear of the unknown, and there's a good kind of fear of the unknown, which is like, the new high school, which we don't know what it's going to look like, but it's going to be great, we're really excited for it. And then there's the unknown, where we're scared because we have no idea what it is or what to expect. But I think that Mr. Messenti and the rest of the administration is doing a wonderful job of getting the word out to the students and the parents of what this test is about, why we're taking it, and how we can make our community better from administering this test.
Questions of either Mr. Messeny or the students, or Dr. Freeman for that matter, or Dr. Keen?
It was a very thorough presentation.
Were you there?
Any questions?
You went to the meeting.
I did. I, excuse me.
I did. I, excuse me. I don't have a question. I do have a comment, though. I did go. And as the board knows, I mean, I'm a parent of a junior, and I had my concerns about him taking this test. And I, I have to say, we were there until 9:15, 9:20. I mean, Mr. Mousany's absolutely right. There is not a teacher or administrator who left that auditorium until there was not a question left to be asked. And that, I, I thank you and your staff for very much. And I, as I shared with Mr. Mousany afterwards, I really found the presence of the teachers that were there and their, their comments to be extremely helpful. And as a parent of a junior, to hear, for instance, Mr. Cooksey at the end get up and say, I'm a teacher here. This is a great school system. We'd like to keep it as a great school system. We juniors, we need your help. We need your help with this test. It's going to help us understand what this, this, this test is going to be like next year. It's going to help us understand the experience. It may help us understand how our curriculum is aligning. It was powerful. And as a parent of a junior, I left and I said, my kid is going. And I, and I, I hope a lot of my fellow parents felt the same way. That this is, this is important. And then hopefully, as Mr. Mousany said, the juniors will feel the same way.
We can circle back on this. I know you've got some, for better or for worse, we've got on the agenda some issues relating to Common Core state standards. And, and so for better or for worse, the whole issue of Smarter Balance and Common Core and teacher evaluations and curricula updates seem to all be in the same pot and seem to be indistinguishable when in fact they are very distinguishable. But in any event, we can, we can circle back on that.
And there was a conference call Friday afternoon statewide for all superintendents about Smarter Balance. And so I can share with you some of that guidance. But the fact is, it doesn't change what the student reps and what Mr. Mousany have talked about. And so if, if they're anxious to get back, we can circle back to that under the balance of my report.
That's, you read my mind. That's what I was thinking. We can, we can certainly come back to that.
If I start talking, you'll miss the game.
Yeah. Unless there are any questions from the board, we can, we can come back to some of this with Dr. Freeman. But I think, well, thank you very much for your reports. And, and go Indians. We want to report back at some point, okay? You can send Mr. Kay's a tweet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm not Catherine, by the way. I'm Stephen.
Okay. We're going to go back to item three on the agenda, which is to take actions, action on the minutes of February 4th, a special meeting, February 10th, a regular meeting, February 24th, a workshop meeting, and February 26th, an executive session. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Changes, corrections?
I just had a question. I'm not sure how important it is. But when I was reading through the February 10th minutes, the ones that was where we voted for the budget, I noticed that, you know, I had made a comment before we voted, and it was not in the minutes. And I thought, since it was in the newspaper, it should have been in the minutes.
You know, it's an interesting question. I have no objection to adding a comment.
I mean, I just, it's more of a question about a question.
Well, it's an interesting, we are required by law only in minutes to record votes. We, our minutes go way beyond what the Freedom of Information Act requires. And, and I think that this, I don't know that we have any explicit standard in terms of what comments get put in and what comments don't. I think you'd probably have to ask the recording secretary. But if there is a comment that you made at a meeting that you would like to have included in the formal minutes, then I, I don't think any of us have any problem with that. That's fine. Just because it is a little handier, and it's a little easier, you know, to see moving forward. So if you want to clarify the minutes.
Sure. I think, you know, the gist of what I said was that, yes, I was voting, going to vote for full-day kindergarten in the budget, but I was, had reservations about the amount of academic pressure and just academics in general that we're putting on for year eight-month-olds and five-year-olds. And just wanted to be clear that I, you know, I would want to see a lot of play and social stuff in the schedule, you know, by giving my blessing to the budget.
Sure. Okay. That's fair. Anybody else? Any other comments, clarifications, questions?
We should vote on each individually.
That's true. There were different people at each meeting. Okay. So for people who, for people that were at the February 4, 2014 meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
An abstention. I'm going to abstain from all of them.
Okay. February 10, 2014, regular meeting, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
As amended.
Second.
Right. As amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. February 24th, workshop meeting. Is motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes, clarifications? All in favor?
Aye.
And February 26th, executive session.
So moved.
Who was there?
There.
Was I there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then I second. Whatever.
I was not there, but I read the minutes.
Surprisingly, I've been at a few meetings lately. By date, I don't recall them. Okay. So I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
All right.
Staying.
Okay. Dr. Valistraci, you reviewed the expenditures for the month.
I did. We went into detail on these expenditures in the operations committee meeting earlier, but I will certainly give a review. The expenditures for the month of February are $3,082,314.20. We have expenditures and encumbrances through the end of February at 55.33% of the budget, as compared to 55.93% in the prior year. We have received the excess cost grant in the amount of $1,44,757 in February. And these funds are recorded under tuition and special education transportation. Many of our kind of categories of funding approximate where we were last year. So salaries, employee benefits, purchase services have remained, in terms of percentage expended, very similar to last year at this time. Tuition, the percent of the budget expended is lower than the prior year. We have seen that especially this month, given that the excess cost grant allocations have been added to this line. Supplies and materials are lower than last year. The capital line is a bit higher. The equipment instructional line in this item is higher than the prior year due to the timing of expenditures and reimbursements. And transportation is a bit lower. If anybody asks questions, again, we went into detail on this in the operations committee meeting before this meeting.
Okay. And you are moving to approve the expenditures for the month?
I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item five, public topic, or public forum for topics on the board agenda. Anybody want to speak now? Please, come on up.
Please bear with me. This is my first time to do this, and I don't always know the proper niceties. I'm Melissa Mill. I live at 161 Foxwood Road South. My family moved here a little over three years ago. We moved here because we were happy to, to move to a town where people are interested in education and, and value education. That was really important to us, and we found that here. I, I am a junkie of watching your meetings on GTV. I know my kids look at me weird all the time for this, and they're like, ah. But, but I'm interested. I, you know, I got here, and I wanted to learn how things work. I have kids, I have three different level kids, a third grader, a sixth grader, and a freshman. So I'm kind of seeing the whole picture. So what has brought me to spoke, to speak here today is, is just something that Dr. Freeman has been bringing up. And then Julie Chaff said that, said the same term at the high school meeting. And I really, I really found it interesting that, what he said, and when you, when you say it at first, it sounds reasonable. I can't remember the algebra that I learned back in the day. So that means that we need to change how we teach our algebra, how we teach math, because there's something wrong with how it's taught, because I can't remember it. Now, I wrote, I wrote a little something about that. I would like to put to bed the notion that because administrators can't remember how to do algebra, that somehow the methods they were taught with should be blamed. Administrators don't remember how to do algebra, because they haven't been using it in the last 20 years. People in the STEM field who were taught with the same methods, remember their algebra because they use it. I'm sure that most people who were called to teach English were not as inspired by their algebra classes as their English classes. That's okay. Likewise, I went to a state college. My husband went to lovely University of Chicago. And he had, he spent half a year studying Plato's Republic. He would be hard-pressed to tell you anything about that now. But he teaches one hell of a quantum physics class. And he doesn't even think about algebra. If he had to sit down and explain to you why you do this operation in algebra, he would be hard-pressed. You know, that's just, it doesn't even, and it's been, that's the way math works. It's systematically, you're adding up more and more simple steps, and those become automatic, and then the next steps become more automatic. So I just wanted, I wanted to bring that point up. And, I mean, there's a lot more that I would like, I would like to really get involved more in the conversation about math. I really think that we should, we should bring back seventh-grade algebra. I think it was a mistake to lose it. I think a lot of kids will benefit from it. I have a kid right now who's doubling up. He's doubling up as a freshman with both geometry and Algebra II. And that's, you know, that's working well for him. He is wanting to be, he's, he's wanting to apply to a good college, several good colleges, and in the science field. And when he makes his application, he needs to have on his transcript every science AP class that Guilford offers. That, at least, that's my understanding. Like I said, I'm just a freshman mother, so bear with me as I'm learning. But when I, we go through his, his schedule, and he takes band, and taking the math, and starting with the accelerated geophysical sciences, he will have one hour, that one class hour through this, four years here, that he could have, like, as an elective or a study hall. That's it. So he, you know, he, it would be hard, he would be hard-pressed to take the English class that's woodworking, with the class where you get to take the, you build the boat, and you have the English class. I was thinking, oh, that would be so cool for him to do it. There's not going to be time for him to do something like that. Now, his situation is different. But for kids who are, you know, who do excel at math, it's a shame that they, that they're going to have that same problem with their schedule being so tight. If, if my son had taken algebra in the seventh grade, he would have taken geometry in the eighth, and then he could be taking Algebra II this year. He could have started with chemistry. He would have at least two more blocks. It's huge. You know, it's jam-packed. So I really, I strongly suggest you bring it back. I'd be happy to participate in any discussion. I've been digging through a lot of the, the evidence that the standards are based on, and the reasons why different things are being taught at certain times. And I find it fascinating. And, and I'm looking for more rigor in that research. And so I'm, I'd love for you to share any that you have. But please bring back algebra. Madison offers seventh-grade algebra, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have, by the way, I asked Dr. Keen for some information today that's in your packets, a comparison of our pre-common core math curriculum through eighth grade and our math curriculum post-common core. Because there's been such a, a, the discussion has not exactly been on specifics, as it relates to the math in particular. So, and I know there's some variation, obviously, because there is an advanced math class in seventh grade, I know. And so, and I know there's some timing issues once you get to the high school in terms of how to get to BC calculus. And, and we've talked about that some in the past. But in any event, we, we can assure Dr. Freeman, you can respond to any of those, those issues as we move forward next year, in terms of what's going to be offered at various levels.
We'll both be happy to.
Okay. Anybody else that, comments for items on the agenda? Okay. Item number six is a report from Mr. Fessel. Mr. Fessel, unfortunately, is not feeling well tonight. So we'll, so he is not here, so we will reschedule that. Item seven, we've done. Eight point one, we've done. Eight point two is the curriculum update.
Which I will turn over to Dr. Keen.
All right. Welcome back, Dr. Keen.
Thank you. It's great to be back. So just the page in front of the, the math shifts that Mr. Bloss was referring to is a curriculum date. And periodically, usually twice a year, I try to update the board about where we are with the curriculum and what you can be expecting, especially for approval in, in the upcoming future. So I've laid it out for you. I'll, I'll kind of just summarize it for, in case you have any questions, and so that the public will know as well. Social studies is our next big review. I have been very excited about it. It's been frustrating in that the State Department of Education has really asked us twice to hold off on changing, because they are developing new frameworks. In 2013, the National Council for the Social Studies published C3, the Framework for College Career and Civic Life. So it, you can hear some of the connections to the Common Core. And all of the members of the committee, there are 10 members of the committee, they've received the document, they've been asked to review it. And Ralph Russo, who is the chairperson at the high school, and Dennis Colleton, who is the social studies team leader at Adams, and I have all been to information sessions about this document. I'm really excited about it. The state anticipates that their work is going to be finished by May. We're ready to go. But the most exciting piece about it, for all of you attorneys on the board, is a real big emphasis on civic life and civic responsibility. And so I am really, really excited. I think that's going to be the major difference in our existing document. Even though we have civics at the high school, we do have citizenship and responsibility beginning at the early grades. I see a brand-new emphasis on that, really beginning at the elementary schools. So that is a piece. And keeping in tune with national organizations changing their standards or their frameworks, as a result, I believe, of the Common Core. The, the National Coalition for Core Arts Standards has also changed. They just have finished their public review of new standards. We did begin meeting, the curriculum team began meeting last summer. We are reorganizing the music curriculum K to 12. It will be organized by around three processes, creating processes, performing, and responding to, to music. And we expect that to be completed by the end of the summer or early fall, and that will be brought to you for approval. So there will be a new music curriculum based on the new music standards. In language arts, we have been working very hard developing units of writing. That has been our focus for the last couple of years, because after our, just a general review of the curriculum, we saw that's where our weakness was, especially at the elementary school. And so we have been developing units of study with the assistance of the Institute for Learning, who provided our initial models. But now we have a year-long writing plan for K through four that has all of the standards addressed in, in writing. And so there are writing units of study. Our next one is going to be our digital literacy units. And we are developing those, one for third grade, which is going to be what stories do maps tell, maps tell us, which I think is going to be very interesting. And the one in fourth grade is going to be a little mini research unit about how technology has changed our world. And for some kids, they're going to be doing Guilford, my community, my state, my world, you know. So the definition of their world is going to be pretty broad. They're going to be choosing. So we're kind of excited about that one. Guilford High School did design and implement two language arts courses for 2013. One was an elective pilot called the Theater Experience, as they began exploring the idea of having an academy, a performing arts academy in the new high school. The other one, we talked a little bit about earlier, and that was the AP Language, AP Language and Composition course, if you remember the rhetoric book that you approved, the textbook. So both of those have been, you know, in a pilot this year. And that, the language, AP Language and Composition will be included in our new curriculum document, the electives. We typically don't put in there, because it is, you know, required. In mathematics, teachers have been implementing the curriculum. We've been exploring additional resources for teachers. We always develop the curriculum first, and then look for resources to help support us, not the other way around. So that it's not just a textbook-driven curriculum. We have also written performance tasks, and have implemented those, and gotten a lot of feedback from staff. And we have been making revisions to those. So the document that Bill was referring to earlier is, and the actual document that the curriculum writing team used as they were designing and really thinking about the changes that need to be made from the old document to the new document. But it does give you some really concrete topics by grade level, and how they have changed. And you can see the points of focus at each grade level, and what focus was diminished from the old document to the one that you adopted. from the old document to the one that you adopted last summer. So that might be very helpful for you. And lastly, the Technology Education Group has just presented to me two courses that they are proposing for next year, and we're currently reviewing the documents now. One is Video Game and Application Design, and the other is Theater Technology and Design. Both of these are elective courses. They may or may not make, depending on the interest of students, but we felt that these may be interesting to students and especially thinking about the Theater Arts Academy. So that's the news in curriculum. It's a little bit late this year. I usually try to do this in January, but I wasn't able to this January. But we are busy at work. The next one you will see will be music. The one following that should be social studies. But a lot of the background work has already been done for social studies, a lot of the research around it, and, but we didn't want to put a whole lot of time and effort into creating a big document and then find out, whoops, we've kind of missed the mark with some of the frameworks. So we're waiting for additional guidance there, based on the advice of the state. Any questions?
Questions?
What kind of changes do you anticipate to the music program? And we have such an amazing music program, I can't imagine.
Well, one, I think it's going to be more comprehensive for all kids, not just for those who are in the performing, you know, the performance groups, especially we're going to be looking at more of the whole idea of, you know, responding to music too, as well as, you know, the composing, the creating of the music. So some of it may be, the creation may not be that I'm in an ensemble. So we're really looking for more music for all kids and thinking about at the elementary schools, those pieces in a more comprehensive kind of way. So those are the, kind of the major changes that I foresee. I think there are going to be improvements. The, all of the teachers, by the way, are on this committee. Typically, we have just a representative group, but because that group is fairly small, it's not as big as having, you know, every teacher of math, which would be every elementary teacher, on a committee. They all wanted to be on this committee, and they're all really excited about the new standards. And I would encourage you to look at those, too. They're online at NC CAS. Even though the review period is over, you still have access to the drafts.
Other questions? Other comments? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And now we're up to, we're up to Common Core. We would like to talk about Common Core, I suppose, at least initially.
Well, and you're right, Mr. Bloss, in that all of these topics do tend to bleed together, and it's interesting. At the teacher convocation this year, as we kicked off the school year, our theme with the staff was to look at all of the work on our plate. We were looking at the special education redesign. We were looking at improving supports for high-achieving students. We were looking at the continued implementation of Common Core state standards, the first year rollout of new teacher evaluations, and what we knew would be the first year of smarter balanced assessment. And in that presentation, when we brought the whole teaching staff for the first year, we were working hard to help people understand how these disparate initiatives all flowed together. And in fact, the metaphor we used was of tributaries coming together to form one big river, because our staff was feeling pulled in multiple directions, and they felt like they were being pulled in all different ways. What's been interesting for me as the year has evolved and as sort of a state-level conversation and a national conversation have sort of caught up with the conversation here in Guilford, I now find myself trying to remind people that while there are synergies, while these pieces come together and have to work together, they are, in fact, different things, particularly the Common Core standards that Connecticut has adopted and that we are now responsible for targeting. The Smarter Balanced Assessment, which will become the state annual standardized test to tell us in broad sense, how are we doing targeting those curricular standards that we work towards? And then Teacher and Administrator Evaluation, which is in support of the work that we do in the school system and should help all of us to continue moving in the right direction, but is intended, in my mind, to mostly a formative support to help teachers be more effective. How do I do better tomorrow than I'm doing today? I'm spending a lot of time now trying to help people remember that those are, in fact, three different things, and I think that they have, to differing degrees, different value. I think some of them are innately good, and I've described them as one of the most exciting events to happen in my career. Others, I get that teacher evaluation is innate good, but it was poorly timed, it should not have been pushed out in front of the work that we were doing with Common Core. And we do need to be thoughtful about both how we roll it out, and I continue to suggest that there are modifications that can be made to the plans, and continue to take broad latitude and broad liberty in the Connecticut plan. So there are places where these need to overlap, and they should be thought of as a very healthy Venn diagram with student learning in the center. But they're also different things, and I've become concerned in the last several weeks that we might be throwing babies away here with bathwater. We need to be careful as we make thoughtful decisions to be thoughtful about how we respond to different components of different initiatives. There is a hearing, there's a hearing being held Wednesday in Hartford, and one of the possible bills that's being discussed is a bill to pronounce a moratorium on the implementation of the Common Core state standards. CAPS has come out with a position statement. CAPS has released testimony today.
CAPS, you should say what CAPS is.
CAPS is the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, and they are opposed to slowing down the work around the Common Core. And I believe that that is still my position. I believe that I want to continue to focus on the work that we do with the Common Core, and in fact, considering whether or not I should enter testimony for Wednesday. CAPS is also opposed to stopping the work that is happening with teacher evaluation, and that is another bill that's being considered. I don't know that I'm going to enter testimony on that, because I believe that that was put in front of the Common Core and shouldn't have been. I do believe that teacher evaluation, done well, helps our teachers to do better. It needs to be combined with strong embedded local professional development. It needs to be a well-thought-out process, and I think we're doing good work with that here in Guilford. In fact, our evaluation committee has been meeting and is moving our local plan forward in some really exciting ways, streamlining it, making it more manageable for the principals, and I think more valuable for the teachers. But that was rushed, and it should not have been put in front of good work around standards and good work communicating standards to our state and to our communities. We have not done a good job communicating the standards to our state, and I know that I have said for a long time at this table that we haven't done as well as we could have done, because an enormous amount of time was pulled away and put into teacher evaluation. That could have been done differently. But I also know that the board has heard me talk about Common Core state standards quite a bit. I made comments similar to this at our last board meeting, the last workshop meeting we had at Cox Elementary School, and want to offer the opportunity just to open up a dialogue with this report and to answer questions rather than report to you about where we stand with Common Core in this report.
Okay. I have a few questions, but go ahead. And others over here? Let me maybe get it started. I think the teacher evaluation component of it was really, and this is not our rule, obviously. The state of Connecticut adopted a statute that said that we had to do it within some narrow limits, the way that we are being told to do it. The flaw in the provision, a flaw in the provision, I think there's several, but the most glaring flaw is that forty-five percent of the teacher's quote-unquote score or evaluation is based on the performance on as-yet-undesigned, as-yet-unadministered standardized tests. So when we, the discussion we were having today about the Smarter Balanced Assessment, the concept behind Smarter Balanced is, in the abstract, a good one, right? That it tests, it's going to be a national test, so we're going to be able to compare rationally Connecticut to California, to Massachusetts, and that's great. And it also has this adaptive component that as you do better, it gets harder. So you really find out what people have learned and where they are, instead of filling in a bubble. Okay. In the abstract, that seems okay to me. It is also not being a technical, technically all that adept. It strikes me that that's not going to be as easy to put together as some things. And so, and so then particularly when you're talking about forty-five states and there are different consortia, I know, that are doing this. I don't blame the teachers for being edgy about having their performance half-based on a test that isn't yet designed in the slightest, and that in retrospect, the state might have considered finding out if the test was valid before they said, teachers, half of your performance rating is going to be based on that test. And I know when Senator Meyer and Representative Candelora and Representative Woodlitz were here last month, they, I think, I think it's fair to say that they felt some kinship in that, that they didn't, that nobody worked that through, frankly.
And people are beginning to hear that message.
Yeah, and that's, listen, I mean, to me, that's a completely reasonable message. You know, you don't know, the whole point of the standard, the Smarter Balanced test run, if you will, you have to find out if the assessment is valid. The only way to find out if the assessment is valid is to find out if the data upon which the assessment is based is valid. Okay. I mean, oh, you're a statistician. I mean, that has, there's some merit to that, isn't there? Okay. So, but the teacher evaluation piece of it is, you've used the word rushed. It really needs to be pulled back and decoupled from the performance on any kind of standardized testing until you find out if the standardized testing is valid.
Right. And that component has happened, so that districts have been freed from feeling the obligation to use the Smarter Balanced, the Smarter Balanced Assessment scores as part of that teacher evaluation. But that was a midstream course correction, and that has come out after we have put our time in upfront building it. You know, there's a certain logic to those three components. When you think about how they fit together, the standards were put in place in 2010, and we should have taken a good three or four years working on placing those standards and building curricula around those standards. And I'll continue to say that in Guilford, we have been doing that. We have been working overtly with the Common Core state standards in Guilford since 2011. The state came to that game about six or eight months ago. They actually adopted the standards, put them in place, and then shifted attention to the teacher evaluation. So the standards were adopted, they were put in place, and at a state level, there was very little conversation taking place. We, in fact, worked really hard to foment a conversation in Guilford last year around the Common Core state standards. Dr. Keen hosted two parent evenings, community evenings, one at the public library, one up at Jones Elementary School. Early in the school year, Dr. Keen and Mrs. Carrery and I were on TV, talking on GCTV about the Common Corps and what they were. I visited multiple PTA meetings at Adams. Mrs. Walker and I were taking out sample items and having parents take sample Smarter Balanced Assessment items in a PTA meeting to sort of have that exposure. In this building, in the learning studio, we ran you, this board, through lessons in the English Language Arts that modeled the shifts embedded in the language arts standards. And then later in the year, at Lakes in Room 18, ran you through mathematical problems, modeled on those pieces. But the conversation caught heat this summer, and the conversation at a state level sort of became much more active this summer. We spent an enormous amount of time with the teacher evaluation plan, and what we should have begun shifting to after three years with the state standards was now beginning to talk about Smarter Balance. Now, the standards are in place. Hopefully, districts have moved curricula to be in alignment with those, and they've worked with their teachers around instructional strategies. Now, we begin single-mindedly rolling out the assessment. So now, we are rolling out Smarter Balance, but it's not single-mindedly, it's continuing to compete with teacher evaluation, and, to your point, the items are still being developed. The test is immature at this point, so I'm very supportive of the field test. Because the assessment is immature, we need to be doing a field test. We need to be having a shakeout cruise for this before we go forward. Finally, I think after probably three years of administration of Smarter Balance, so that we have actual baseline data accumulated, then and only then should we have started talking about teacher evaluation. Now, a way to support teacher growth and, to some degree, measure teacher effectiveness on the assessment that was built on the new standards. There's a clear logic there, and it didn't get rolled out that way for a number of reasons, many of them beyond Guilford. And we have done our best to keep up with that, and we have been, I think, not shy in our criticism, our critique, and our volunteering to help reshape some of those systems. We have teachers in this school district who are contributing to the item banks and working on Smarter Balance. We rolled out the Smarter Balance practice tests last year. We have, we have a number of administrators in this district who are working on the teacher evaluation plan locally with committees of our own teachers, and we have voiced our concerns loudly in Hartford to try to change. I think to some degree, we're being heard, but I don't think we've made adjustments significant enough at this time. What I don't think we want to be reconsidering at this time is pulling the plug on those standards. Those standards were the anchor component. Those standards align us with other states who are working towards the same standards. And Mr. Bloss, I think you make a good point. When you look at the math as an example and you look at individual moves that have been made, if there isn't anything there, I think, that is shocking or scandalous. We are dealing with an interesting challenge at the middle level. We are looking at the rigor in seventh and eighth grade. I do want to rush to point out that we had two levels of classes in the seventh and the eighth grade before. We still have two levels of classes at the seventh and the eighth grade, but we have, in aligning to the Common Core, slowed down where we label a high school algebra class happening. That doesn't happen in seventh grade, that only happens in eighth grade now, and that does have ripple effects. And that's one of the components that we want to continue to look at carefully, and in fact, want outside eyes looking at that component. Mr. Bowden and Dr. Keen and I had lunch in Madison today. We met with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent from Madison Public Schools today. We talked about math curriculum, and in fact, Madison and Guilford are considering the exact same text series for math at this time. Dr. Keen was invited to be in Madison, I believe, on the 27th of this month, because they have already adopted a text that we may be bringing to you in short order. It is very much one of our top choices, and they're beginning to plan their teachers on that same exact text a little bit ahead of us. They're a little behind us in the curricular work, but they're ahead of us in selecting the text. We talked about Common Core state standards. We talked about the hearing that's taking place on Wednesday. We are collaborating closely with Madison and monitoring what they're doing. They're looking just as closely at us and monitoring what we are doing. We're very similar communities with very similar students with very similar expectations and goals for our kids, who are looking at some things a little differently right now until you start to look deeply. When you push on it and when you get down to it, we're looking at adopting the same math text, because we're actually teaching math in very much a similar approach. But we are working closely with our neighbors in Madison. We have a very healthy relationship and respect for our neighbors in Madison. We can learn from some decisions that they're making right now in real time, and they're doing the same with us. I know I said I was going to let you guys talk, and then I don't know how that started again.
And I have one thing I need to say, I think, too, about Smarter Balance. And we have been watching, and they have, they really do have a good website, but a lot of people say, well, what does that mean for Guilford? And it really means four things. One, we didn't have to do CMT and CAPT in English Language Arts and Mathematics this year because we elected to do the field test that would not count, you know, to try it out, because we said, look, we're already changing a lot of our instructional strategies, a lot of our curriculum. Why would we want to use a test that we know is not going to be around anymore and take that? So that was a trade-off. We got the waiver and said, well, so if you do this, you don't have to do this, you don't have to double test. And so that made perfect sense to us to go with the field test. A lot of people said, well, what about the cost? Well, we have never had to pay in Guilford for CMT or CAPT or any other state test that came prior to those two. came prior to those two versions, if you will. That is a state expense because the states are required to test annually. It's in legislation that all students in grades three through eight and once in high school. A lot of it goes back to NCLB, but even before that, we had an annual assessment in Guilford, just like most states did. So the smarter balanced package is paid for by the state. The average cost is about $27 a student. I'm not sure what Connecticut had before, but I know that many, for most states, that's about equal to what their state test costs them in paper. But what we are getting in Guilford and in anyplace else in Connecticut is a much more robust assessment system. Not just that it's computer adaptive, but there are two other components that I am most excited about. One is the digital library. The digital library is a set of formative tools that teachers will be able to access with lesson plans, with videos of, of really rich lessons that have been vetted by a lot of educators. We actually have two of our own staff members contributing to the digital library for smarter balance and a part of that vetting team of what is quality and what is rigorous. So next fall, all of our teachers are going to have access to that. That's, that's really a goldmine, as far as I'm concerned. Also, we'll have access to what they're calling interim assessments, where they can be either short pieces around particular topics, or they could be a whole practice test before the summative. We, we haven't seen them yet, so we don't know, you know, which ones we're going to be able to give, but I'm constantly, I'm not, even though I'm an assessment coordinator, I'm not in favor of just testing, testing, testing. And I'm constantly, you know, listening to principals, "Well, we need more data," or "We need data on these kids," or, you know, "For intervention." Well, we're gonna have a tool that we know is going to be rigorous, that we can give at any time during the year, and, or it's gonna have several tools. There'll be several interim assessments, and there's no strict guideline that says only, this can only be given in November and this one in March. And so, the other piece is the technology, and that is different in Guilford. We've, we've always said, "Technology is valuable, it needs to be used as a tool, not as an entity in itself." But what we found is that we didn't have the bandwidth, and you heard when Pat Whitlitz was here, you know, her complimenting us for getting the grant, the technology grant to increase our bandwidth, and we needed to do that anyway. It's not that, you know, smarter balance is, maybe it pushed the envelope a little bit, but we got a grant from the state to do it, and we're going to, and now we have much faster machines, we have, you know, much greater access to, to the cloud. We're working, using Chromebooks now at Adams, we're really excited about those, but it's something we needed to do anyway. So those four things, the whole design of the assessment, I'm excited about because we've never had those tools before. We just had this thing, the CMT and CAPT, that came to me in a hundred and twenty boxes every year, and I distributed them, and then I took them back and counted them all, and then we got this data at the end. Now we're gonna have, and which was always at the end of the summer. Now we're gonna have more data in a more robust system. We're gonna have a formative digital library that any teacher can use, and interim assessments that we can use as we need to, that we didn't have before. So that is, I think, is really, really exciting, and it's not costing Guilford anymore, except it's really having us focus on some things that I think are important and we focus on anyway. So, I mean, I know I'm gonna be criticized for this, but I'm really excited about this new tool, and I think it has a lot of potential for improving teaching and learning in Guilford Public Schools.
Are you gonna get the data more quickly?
After we have the real test, it will be. This, we won't have any data or any specific data from this.
Not in this field test.
Student-specific data. Right, in this field test, we will not receive any student-specific data. We may receive district-level aggregate data. We're not sure if we're gonna even receive building-level data in this field test. But when this system, when we have fully transitioned, when we've made the shift over, yes, we should get, we should get the test results more quickly than we get them currently.
Building level is fine for us if it's eleventh grade.
Yeah, but we probably won't even get building this year.
Okay, well, that's true, but you'd get it up.
We should get district-level data, is what they're expecting us to receive.
Aggregate data.
Aggregate data.
Oh, I see, everybody put together.
District performance.
Yes.
We won't get, and again, this is, you know, this is a shakeout cruise. The, the most exciting component of this for us, and I think it's sort of been discussed broadly, there are certain things that you can never truly know until you have experienced. I can explain to somebody ad nauseam how to ride a bicycle. I can, I can draw diagrams and I can tell you really thoroughly, but until you have ridden a bike, you will never really know what that experience is or how to do that experience. Our teachers are very much at a position this year where, that we have been talking about the Common Core State Standards for, for years. We started in 2011. The work on the units in the Language Arts component was in response to teacher feedback saying, "Show us what this looks like. Show us what you mean to read closely, to have, to have worthy texts, to slow down and do fewer things for a longer time." So at each grade level over the last three years, we have designed one unit in consultation with IFL, trained the principals and the coaches to roll it out, and rolled out just that one unit at each grade level, so that the teachers now have the, the revised curricula. We're working on the curricula revisions, but they also have one anchor unit that shows what we mean to work in those areas. We have debriefed with every grade of teachers as they have rolled out those units. So as we've been rolling that work out, they didn't really know what that could be until they started doing that. We won't really know what the smarter balanced assessment feels like, looks like, until we've done it. Our teachers are still very much trained in, in having a script manual that comes with the CMT, and you, you read page one and tell them when to open the cover to their book and begin. Very different than a teacher who is now going to go into a classroom, log onto a site to get a unique identifier that's generated in real time, that she writes on the whiteboard to say, "You are now all to log into the website, select Guilford, and enter this unique identifier because that begins our test session in our class today." And when it's really up and running, then every student will have an individual, unique exam that he or she is taking as they go through, because it will be computer adaptive. But the teacher has launched that test session by doing that. We, we just need to get through a couple of cycles. I don't think that the field test will be the first year of shaking out. We know that we're gonna be getting used to these new assessments. We know that our students are going to be getting used to the new assessments, and, and they're completely unaligned with anything that we've had before. So we're used to looking at our, our percentile performance rates on CMT and CAPT, and they're really high. We've got high eighties and low nineties of students who are performing at goal, and now we're gonna start a brand-new assessment. I don't expect that we're gonna have high eighties and low nineties of students performing at goal. It's a new assessment. It wouldn't really give us workable information if our students were performing at that higher level out of the gate. So I'll be proud, I'll take it if we land it, but I'm imagining that we're going to have a lower score of students perform, and we have to help our community remember that's, that's not a comparison to where you were on the last year of CMT compared to where we are this year. You won't be able to say that our scores are worse because it's a whole new score on a whole new test. You simply won't be able to make that comparison. And we watched New York struggle with that. And New York got out a year ahead and struggled with that because the scores looked lower and newspapers therefore said that the scores were worse. They weren't worse, they were completely different. It's, it's like comparing your fifty time to your five-hundred-meter swim time. You can't compare those two times, even if you just take the five-hundred and divide it into fifties. You still can't compare those times, they're two different performances. And we have to, we have to, we have to talk about that. We have to have conversations and help people be ready for that. So the year of field testing, I hope, sort of cleared the palate. I know I'm mixing metaphors here, but it will help us, it'll help to get some separation between the CMT and CAPT scores and the newer scores.
John, question?
Well, yeah. I have personally no problem with the Common Core State Standards. They're standards, I think they're good. I could buy into them, have bought into them. I also have no problem with Guilford being a laboratory for field testing a statewide exam. It benefits us because we get some experience, as you were just saying. Those, I think, are fine for me. My problem is exactly as Bill pointed out, that we're using teacher, or we're using some of this data for teacher evaluations. We're creating undue stress on these teachers, which is, we said when we talked about all-day kindergarten, stress on teachers directly causes stress on students at all levels, and it just is not fair.
Here, here.
So the question I have, that was the statement, the question, the question I have is what can we, in addition to what you're doing testifying, do to try to slow this down more and make it more scientific, that you don't evaluate somebody using data that is not proven to be reliable? It makes no sense. So what can we do?
I think continue to speak to the representatives that we had here as we have. I think to continue to follow the work coming out of CAVE and the positions that CAVE is adopting. If, if CAPS has adopted a certain series of positions, then your representative organization will be doing so as well.
And CAVE is, is actually being very good on this, you know, and, but this is a really good example of, of how everything is being blended together. The perception right now is that this is all a big stew. And when, and, right, and there are, the separate ingredients are completely lost right now. It's just, the perception is it's all one big mix. The, the thought of, you know, I guess I, I don't want to project Dr. Keen's position, but I don't know, if, if we were told, "Delay implementation of Common Core" today, what that would mean is we'd have to tear up all our curricular documents, or at least in those areas, go back to where we were two or three years ago and start over, and then start over again in a year or two?
See, that statement doesn't even make sense to me because the standard is a target, it's something towards which you aspire. So if we were told to delay Common Core State Standards, that sentence doesn't even make sense to me because the standard is in place, and we are now beginning, as you saw in the curriculum report, we're working to align our various curricula to be in alignment with that and supporting teachers on the instructional techniques that they would employ in the classroom to really work us in that direction. You know, you can delay the rollout of the assessment, which is-
That's fine.
Which is keyed to those standards.
Okay.
And you can delay the use of those standards, those scores, in a teacher evaluation model. I would in fact go further and argue that with the teacher evaluation model, and the argument that I have continued to, to, I, to attempt to forward, is that we shouldn't just be delaying the benchmarks. We should also be looking at the plan and working on making it a truly formative plan that is supportive of teacher growth and not a summative or pejorative plan that chunks teachers into successful and unsuccessful teachers. I don't believe that Guilford has ever struggled with, with making good hiring decisions and holding on to talented teachers. But as I've used in the coach analogy, everybody can get better and everybody can improve their performance. And our evaluation plan should be targeted at teachers that are already talented and already successful and making them more so. We don't have to worry about an evaluation plan that targets people who are performing at the low end, and how will we deal with those questions? Because I think that we address that concern, and it's not a problem in our community. Originally, when school reform was rolled out, it was built on six principles. Principal number four said that high-achieving school districts were gonna be unfettered from regulation to unleash innovation on the state, and I'm waiting to feel unfettered. I feel very, very fettered over the last, and more so over the last several months.
The chance that Hartford is gonna unfetter people hard cereal.
So we keep working on that, and I don't, and again, I don't want to throw away teacher evaluation either. I do think there is merit in slowing that down, but I think there's greater merit in restructuring it and making some broad change. When, when the state announced that there were greater flexibilities being released for teacher evaluation, there was only one that affected our plan, and it was the decoupling from the standardized assessments for the second year. We had already been released for this current administration, and we were being released for one more. Everything else that they, that, that was presented as additional flexibility, we had already taken advantage of, lobbied for, fought for, and got approved in our local plan. So we were already sort of pushing the envelope on that. If, if the greater flexibilities didn't do anything to help us change our plan, then I think we need to push the envelope further, and I have a meeting on the twenty, on the thirty-first. I have a meeting, a very small meeting with the commissioner and the chief talent officer on the thirty-first to push the Guilford plan. But every time I do that, I also try to say, and I think we're making good decisions, you might want to apply them more broadly than just to Guilford. I don't want an exception. I think we should be changing the plan more broadly, and we'll continue to push for that. It shouldn't be allowed to get in the way of, of, of good work towards the standards, and I would be willing to completely park it if that was necessary in order to continue the good work that's being done on the standards to relieve that, that stress. I absolutely agree that the stress, and it's not, I don't think it's just affecting our teachers in the classroom. I think the stress is beginning to affect communities. I think you're beginning to see it taking a toll in, in, in school-community relations, school-district-community relations. We, we need to find a way to continue to have these conversations and have them in a way that is productive, not by having shouting matches at each other. And I'm worried about what's happening at the state level, where, where different educational organizations are falling into the way the town hall meetings sort of rolled out, and the people who should be concerned about the level of work that we're doing here are beginning to shout at each other at Hartford, and that's not healthy. That's not what we want to see playing out.
Well, that brings up one thing. We've talked about perhaps doing some kind of a meeting or a forum to talk about some of these issues in a more kind of informal way with the public and kind of get other people's views and share our views and answer questions and so forth. Do you think that'd be a good idea?
Yeah, I, I think-
With the understanding that we don't yell at each other in Guilford. We, we have, you know, there can be valid differences of opinion in this area.
Absolutely.
We get that, and that's fine. But what, what do you think?
I, I think it's probably something that needs to happen. I wish it had happened more broadly three years ago. I, I think that we invited that conversation last year, but I think there's a level of interest now that we didn't have last year, and so I think we need to, right, and we need to take advantage of that opportunity.
Nobody was focused on this last year, nobody.
No?
So.
So yes, I think that we need to do that. I think it would be a healthy conversation for the community to have.
I agree.
Okay, why don't we talk about scheduling that, and we'll figure out a time when the bulk of us can do it, and, okay.
Can I ask one, one question? So obviously, this field testing of smarter balance is gonna give us a lot of information about kind of processes, logistics. Reports from Adams are that they're kind of having to bend over backwards to figure out how to test kids given the internet connectivity or computers or, should we be, I mean, much like we've had some discussion about teacher evaluation the way it stands now, and do we need, as a board, to think about resources to make sure that happens? Are we already getting a sense that some of our schools are gonna need some help?
Well, one of the things, I mean, we've been doing readiness tests, technical readiness tests, and I know that they have increased bandwidth at Adams. I know they purchased new Chromebooks and have been polluting new Chromebooks just to have, and which are awesome for this, because you just turn them on and they go.
When you're there.
And so I think we need to see.
Okay.
I think it's more of a way to see.
I just, I just think as a board, we should kind of be aware of that and, and, and-
I think it might make a lot of sense after or, or later into the testing window to invite Mr. Mitchell to come and to give a report to you on a more technical basis.
I think that's a good idea.
Right now, that question sort of depends on who you ask. I think Mr. Mitchell and his team may be a little more confident than some of the end-users feel. I'll tell you a story, and maybe we shouldn't share it on camera, but I will. Last year, early last year, we wanted to know what our local system would allow us to do, and some of the heaviest usage that will happen is when lots of students are testing at the same time, and some of the items include downloading video. And so we wanted to see what would happen locally if we had hundreds of users, and so we actually set up sort of a worst-case scenario, because obviously, you know, the, the fifth grade video probably wouldn't fall at exactly the same time as the third grade and the sixth grade and the eighth grade and the eleventh grade. But we asked every principal in every school to get students on computers at nine-thirty-five on one given morning, and we all went to the- one given morning, and we all went to the same site, and we wanted to see how our system would hold up. Would we be robust enough to handle that kind of usage locally? We did fine. We crashed the website because we overloaded them. And so we didn't intend to do it, but we hacked that site inadvertently and crashed them, because they weren't set up to handle the kind of traffic that we put in at one moment on one given morning. But our system did okay. And so I, I think we've got to get through, and we'll probably, we'll be able to answer it better in a few more weeks, I think.
And I ask not only for that reason, but I do know that what's being reported to me is it sounds like there are classes shifting, and I know, for instance, the band is, for the next, like, two months, the entire eighth-grade band is all meeting at once, whereas the band director's usually has separate classes. I mean, I think we want to pay attention to just kind of overloading particular teachers in order to work around computer stuff. But I imagine we're going to find out more when we get through all this.
Right. So you're looking at the logistics beyond the actual technology.
Yeah, just, I'm just thinking, but, but I think it's all related, and, and we want to support all our teachers and not have a couple of them kind of overloaded for two months, because we haven't equipped our schools well.
Right. And we were just having this conversation earlier today. I think part of that, part of that has to do with how many machines we can have hands-on all at once. And so moving the, the class sets of--
Right, the actual, right, right, right.
But I think the other part is actually that we are still caught up in the idea of the CMT schedule. And, and we all find ourselves falling into it, when are the eighth graders taking the, the, the math portion? We don't have to have all the eighth graders taking the math portion. So I think as we get more comfortable with this, we will start to remember that it is in fact--
We can be flexible.
--a 12-week window. And we can be more flexible, I think, than we're allowing ourselves to be now.
Okay.
And that's part of, again, learning how this, this assessment is much more flexible. And I think in time, it will be much less intrusive, because not every eighth-grade teacher needs to be doing the eighth-grade assessment at the same time. The security component is almost removed, because when, when the student in the next class finishes, there isn't a book full of answers sitting around somewhere. It's on that student's test, which is off digitally and not here locally, and mine's going to be different anyway. So I think that we will--
Okay. That's interesting.
You're right. I think we'll be more sophisticated at that as we do our second and third and fourth administration.
Okay.
I remember in the olden days of CMT, where you should, you had to shut down the whole school for a week, and you just did all the tests as fast as you can. And then we got more sophisticated and realized we could just test for an hour every morning and then still have a school day afterwards. And we had to learn that with years of experience before we figured out we didn't have to stop everything we were doing, drop, roll, and assess all at the same time. You could actually spread it out.
Correct. I remember that.
Okay. So we'll talk about trying to schedule a, kind of an overall meeting on some of these issues--
Be awesome.
--in the near future.
I think it'll be a good conversation.
Just had a quick comment that was probably more applicable 10 minutes ago, but when you were, Dr. Keen, you were talking about, you know, that we don't have to double up on testing this year, because we decided to take the Smarter Balance over the CMT. And I completely agree that we don't need more testing. So, you know, whatever one is better, we definitely don't need more. But I guess while we restructure the math, you know, curriculum, and I know there's planned changes for the sixth-grade math curriculum next year in terms of, you know, there's going to be, you know, advanced level and different changes. I guess the concern with not having a standardized test this year in math for fifth graders is that one of the assessment pieces will be the student's fourth-grade--
CMT score.
--CMT score, which to me, I mean, there's a humongous difference between a nine-year-old and a soon-to-be 11-year-old in terms of their development--
Those are the reasons I made.
--and what they can do now that they couldn't do--
Right.
--you know, a year ago. So I know that there's other assessments that will be used for that, but it seems that that is just so invalid.
Right. I agree. I'll have, we'll have to check. I don't know what their plans are for identifying. I know, you know, my direction to them is, you know, it must have been multiple measures. It can't just be based on one assessment or one recommendation or one set of grades, but it has to, you know, have a really full, broad component. So we'll have to check on that and see what they're going to use and if there are other kinds of assessments for this year. And probably for next year, too, because we're not going to have--
It creates a whole--
Yeah. It's going to create a lot of information, because we don't even know what the metrics are going to look like yet, especially on a computer adaptive test. It won't be like CMT or CAPT. So that's going to be real important. I'll check on that. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on this? All right. Eight point four, Dr. Freeman.
I can do very briefly, and it in fact anticipates item 9.1. And I apologize, but I know that the board did receive communications about a second principal retirement that we have been made aware of here in district.
Right. We should mention, yeah, Mrs. Snorkowski is retiring from Baldwin.
Yes. So in your packet, we have given you draft timelines of the intention of moving forward with both of those hiring committees. I intend to replicate the process that we used to hire Mrs. Hale at Lakes, so we will be inviting board member participation. I will be meeting with both the staff and the community groups in those meetings to, to draw our perfect principle and to look forward and to hear from those two constituent groups before moving forward. This time, which is different than the search for Mrs. Hale, we do have Mr. Bowden in the HR office, who will be taking lead on this, although I will be intimately involved with the hiring process. We will be adding a layer that we didn't do overtly in that process, but did use in the process that led to both Mrs. Brown and Mr. Bowden joining us, which is something that I call snapshot interviews. I, I just have a real difficult time paper screening and then not worrying that I lost somebody really good, because the paper packet was not impressive. So in each of these cases, as an extension of the paper screen, Mr. Bowden and I will be bringing in numerous candidates for very short, 10 or 15-minute opportunities to touch base. It is really a chance to see somebody and have them talk to their, their paper packet and get a meeting in there as well. And then we will slate a palette of interview candidates. We will select representative committees that will include teachers and parents from both of the schools, and we'll begin the interview process, hoping to have candidates to this board before the close of the school year, and both candidates onboard for a July 1 start. Those are ambitious timelines, so there will probably have to be some adjustment along the way. But the goal would be to have both of these team members starting with a July 1 start date. And then again, I'll just note, in the search for Mrs. Brown, we went out three times before we settled and brought in a special ed director, and I would venture to suggest that we brought in the right one. We will not settle. If we don't find the candidate that we think is the right fit for our school at this time, we'll work with some idea of an interim, if necessary, to have the school year open in one of those locations, and then keep searching until we find the right fit for each of those buildings.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Theoretically, you'll have the same applicant pool for both of these positions. They're both elementary schools, technically. So I know that you had a month's jumpstart on one, because you had the notification sooner. But it's interesting to me that there's a, a spread of a month in terms of interviewing the candidates and seeing the candidates. Will you, would it make sense to do a combined process?
There will be some overlap, but not complete overlap. So I've, I didn't mention that we already began the process with recruiting. We've been out talking to people already. And I am aware of folks who are interested in a middle school, but not an elementary school, or vice versa. So I think there will be overlap, but I don't think it will be complete overlap. And we were, we were also thinking just about the, the time involvement. I, I did know that there is always the possibility of finding two really good candidates in the search that goes first--
Right.
--and then, I, I always try to say it's a great problem to have, but it's always heartbreaking when you've got two really great candidates and you have to pick the one. We do have the opportunity in this situation, that if we see strong runners-up for the, for LEET, which is out first, only because of timing, only because we knew of Mrs. Bishop and were able to post that earlier, that I, we have the opportunity to invite candidates to stay with us if they didn't already overlap.
Good.
But I am aware already of some candidates that we are encouraging to show an interest, who are only interested in one and not the other. So teacher certification is exactly the same, but principals don't necessarily see those two assignments the same way. And there is a difference in what people want to do, how they see themselves fitting with a school. Quite honestly, we didn't really even consider it, because I knew of one so much earlier than the other, that we had this LEET timeline sort of prepared already. We have kept it open longer. We didn't close it, because what we will take advantage of is some combined advertising. So for instance, in EdWeek, which is a national publication that's a little expensive to advertise in, we're going to advertise for both in EdWeek, and we will keep the LEET posting open a little bit longer, so that we can get the advantage of that double advertising. We are looking nationally at, we are posting, and EdWeek is the, the largest, but we'll also be advertising some website locations that get national traffic, and of course, in all of our local papers to register the current and, and some of those.
Not surprisingly, Dr. Freeman is a bit, is not passive when it comes to recruiting and, and hiring administrators. I think we found that out, and we'll, obviously, we hate to lose both Mrs. Bishop and Mrs. Snorkowski, but we're very confident that we'll have two outstanding candidates to--
We're already inviting talent to apply.
Would expect no different. Okay. Board agenda is, first of all, act on 9.1 is the personnel items, which are to ratify the resignation of Mrs. Snorkowski, Ann Snorkowski, as a principal for the purpose of retirement. Thirty-three years of service in Guilford, effective July 1st. Is there a motion to ratify that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You know, if she were here, I'd do the same thing that we did with Mrs. Bishop.
Yes.
She has been a longtime educational leader in this district. I think that she has contributed a great deal. Mrs. Dudley, you worked with her for many, many years.
I worked with her first as a special education teacher when she, I first got in, back into teaching. Then she became dean of students, and finally, the Baldwin, Baldwin principal. She was always very good at challenging staff and students to do their very best work, but always there for the caring word or pat on the back of support when needed. She's an outstanding educator, and we in this community will miss her very much. I wish her a long and healthy retirement, and her and Paul and her daughter Christina. Hope they enjoy the newfound free time they will have. And I want to just say thank you, Ann, for all you've done for Guilford.
Excellent. All right. Did we vote, or did we just make the motion? We did make the motion?
We did vote, yeah.
All in, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? With the board's thanks, the minutes please reflect. And, and also ratify the resignation of Joyce Tucker as a world language teacher at Guil, from Guilford High. Thirty-two years of service in Guilford. A lot of, a lot of years.
Yep.
Is there a motion to ratify her resignation?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments about Ms. Tucker? She's obviously been a very long--
Also with our thanks for careers worth of service to the children of Guilford.
Right.
Flamboyant and colorful and lots of fun and--
Did you have her?
Two out of my three. I did not have her myself.
Your kids had her.
Correct. Two out of my three.
Two. Well, we, we miss, you know, the, this kind of, this kind of experience. It's, it's not easy to replace, and, and they're really, as I get older, I'm coming to the conclusion that there's no substitute for experience, that I didn't think was so important before I had it. But the, that, that, those are people that have contributed a great deal. And so we thank her, so. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Again, if the minutes would reflect with the board's sincere thanks.
Thank you.
Nine point two is to receive for possible action bonding item recommendations from the operations committee. Ms. Renner, if you would talk about that a little bit?
Certainly. The operations committee would like to recommend that the board approve two important capital improvement projects, both to be funded through bonded debt. Each is a long-term project, so I think it's appropriate to pay for the projects through debt financing. And each is really important to what we're trying to do here in town. Basically, one of the projects relates to Adams Middle School. It's an replacement of the windows and also some security upgrades and classroom renovations. And the second project has to do with security improvements at four of the schools in town. Baldwin Middle School and three of the elementary schools, Calvin Leet, Cox, not Cox, Calvin Leet, Melissa Jones, and Guilford Lakes. The reason is that the Cox project that we're just wrapping up has taken care of the security aspect that we're looking at in the other schools, and of course, the new high school will be designed the right way. So Mr. Gurnham has presented these, both of these projects to us. That's kind of an overview. I'd be happy to go into more detail, but I, I think we've, we've covered the basics before. The amounts to be approved are, have been somewhat of a moving target, and the reason for that is that the engineering work is being wrapped up, and that's why we're, the amounts are being fine-tuned. And right now, what the operations committee is going to ask the board to approve is $1.6 million for the security upgrades and $2.3 million for the Adams project. These amounts include contingency, they include a 4% bond issuance cost, and 1% for construction, administration, and management.
Okay. So that's a motion?
It is.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, questions about that?
It was a good thorough discussion in the operations committee, and the choice of the amounts to be realistic. Of course, once you start opening walls, you're never quite sure what costs are going to be involved, so appropriate contingency was placed on the security upgrades, as I understand, of 15% ultimately. So both of these are appropriate bonds.
I'd, I'd feel less comfortable with the numbers if, if it wasn't the board's longstanding practice to not spend appropriated amounts if, if we don't need to. I mean, we've, we've closed out multiple bonds lately without spending the entire approved amount at referendum. So I think the public trusts and accepts that we aren't, Mr. Gurnham is not just going to start doing a bunch of things that are outside the scope of it, and, and to the, to the, to the credit of the administration, that, that we have really not spent the appropriated amounts. I think in just about every bond that we've, that we've done lately, so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with it as well, with that understanding.
And I think it's appropriate to point out, historically, seven years ago, we were talking about the need for a new Adams Middle School and the need for a new high school. We made the decision to go with a new high school, but at the same time, to improve the health and safety of Adams Middle School, with the intention of keeping that into the future. So this is one more step in the maintenance upgrade of Adams Middle School, making it a decent geographic location for our middle school kids to learn. Seven years ago, there was no ventilation, there was, windows were unable to be opened. We had problems. And we're well on the way to improving the condition of that historic building. So I think the community needs to look at the expenditure as just one more step, and there will be more. Adams will need more work. It's our oldest building. My God, it's older than me, so--
What?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah. Let it go. Okay. Any other, any other questions? Any other comments? All right. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ms. Renner.
Thank you.
Item 10, unfinished business, which I assume we don't have any of. Item 11, policy committee, or we're going to meet next?
We're meeting next week.
Right.
Okay. By the way, the policy on the graduation requirements is going to have to be amended based on the change since CMT. Right now--
That's right.
--CAPT is a graduation requirement. There's no such, such thing as CAPT moving--
Right. Right now--
For the present 10th grade class, it's different. That's fine.
Yeah. Yeah. On the present one, it says state test. And so, it will have to be amended. But the high school has been working on that. And they're going to be coming to, a committee is going to be coming to the policy committee in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Operations committee?
Oh, what else? Next month, we're going to discuss the five-year capital plan.
Oh, good.
About, yeah.
Okay. So, we'll have a little better idea about this. Okay. Good. All right. High School Building Committee, I went to the last meeting. I think I notified people that the committee had taken a vote. And it was a difficult vote. And it was a good discussion, but it was a difficult vote to not include the black box theater in the construction design drawings at this time, I guess is the right way to phrase it. They ran into a situation where they are spending money at a rate that if they continue to spend money at the present rate, they're still under budget. They're still within the budget. But they would leave absolutely no contingency for any unknowns in the demolition of this building. And so, you would, they would have had to have committed to being able to tear this building down for the budgeted amount with no risk of finding something unexpected, which made the building committee very queasy. I think it's fair to say that the odds of being able to tear this building down without finding something unexpected are quite low. So, they decided to, and the problem, this is in the EdSpecs, the education specifications that we as a board voted on. So, I think we all agree that it would be an educationally appropriate and a positive thing to do. But comparing the risk of not being able to accomplish the project within the appropriated amounts with the value, with the need to make a decision really early in the timeline before we've even started to tear this building down, the committee voted to not go forward with the construction design drawings at this time, but to revisit it if the circumstances allow in terms of the expenses for the remaining, remainder of constructing this building and then whatever can be worked out with, or the new building and then tearing down this building. So, it's not, for people that are really, think that the black box would be a really good educational tool, and that there are very many people who do, it's not over. But it's also not, it's too high risk at this point to move forward, according to the committee. So...
Right way.
I think that's a fair way.
I think that's an accurate description, yes.
So, we'll see. Hopefully, hopefully, it can still be worked out. But the committee is very committed to completing the project within the budget. And as I understand it, it's still online on time in terms of the expected occupancy date and a year and change. So, so we'll, we'll see. I encourage everybody to go to one of the meetings because they actually are very, very useful in terms of the decisions that they have to make on a monthly basis or bi-weekly basis, really fascinating. But town committee liaisons, anything going on town committee-wise?
Lane, acquisition committee met. Nothing in particular for the board, though.
Okay. Public, anything on Fields? Is that, no? Okay. And Mr. Sands is going to go to the pension committee. I know, I think, next month is it or the month, sometime this spring, I know, to talk about some of the issues that we had talked about. And that's, I think, very useful. Okay. Any other town committees? All right. Public questions, item 12. Yes, please. Come on up.
Sorry. I didn't know what my question would be prior to Dr. Freeman's presentation. I'm Laura Bauer, 6D Cambridge Way in Guilford. Given that the public forum will be scheduled, I was hoping to, if I could just ask you to start thinking about a few things that I think are on the minds of parents in the district. I've only, I can only speak anecdotally to issues at the higher grades because my children are in elementary. But in terms of what's going on in the elementary school, some things that parents would like to know, and I think the reason for less concerns or not as many concerns being voiced last year during these conversations was because there's really been, there was a lack of understanding in what the Common Core and the SBAK and the teacher evaluations all meant in theory versus what they were going to mean in practice. Yes, some people weren't quite ready to have the conversation. And plenty of people were talking about it. But again, now that it's here and working in our kids' classrooms, that's why we have more questions and concerns. So, to that end, I would ask you if you could start thinking about it, Dr. Freeman, and the board as well. How we got from a set of standards that I think makes sense to everyone to every minute of every day being filled with the standards and aligning with the Core. For example, I know that in my kid's six-and-a-half-hour day, they spend one hour in readers workshop, one hour in writers, one hours in math, 80 minutes of specials, an hour of recess and lunch, which leaves only one hour for anything else. As Dr. Keen mentioned, and as I hear that there's questions, there's questions and plans to align music and arts and with the Common Core and perhaps standards coming down. No, did I misunderstand?
Yeah, yeah. To their own standards, their own national organization
Okay.
of music educators. And they, everybody is like looking at their standards now and saying, okay, how do we make them better? How do we make them richer so that we can be globally competitive? But going back to the readers workshop and the writers workshop, and we haven't been doing it that long in Guilford, but that has been around for probably 20 years. It has nothing to do with the Common Core.
Well, right. So, I get my, the question that parents have is how we got from the standards to what's going on in the classroom. We understand that the standards are in our curriculum, but yet, the curriculum has all changed. And the curriculum has changed to align with the standards. And the standards align with the test. And the test, you know, so we have specific questions about if this was only meant to be the goal, why has it changed the way that kids need to be, why has it changed that, why has it changed the way that kids are being taught and the way teachers can teach or are suggested to teach? Because that's what it seems like is happening. And I think that those are really...
I think that those are good questions.
Some of the, you know, the missing questions for us.
Yeah. I'd encourage anybody who has questions about what they would like to have addressed, either online, you know, at this meeting that we're going to schedule, or just email. I encourage people to do that. Some things, I think, are probably beyond being able to be responded to in an email. If we're going to talk about, you know, the philosophy of what Common Core is all about, the philosophy of what, you know, the teacher evaluations are all about, I'd kind of hesitate to, you know, to type up an email about that. But, you know, I think, I'd encourage anybody who has specific questions that they'd like to see Dr. Freeman or Dr. Keen present at this meeting to just let them know.
But I'm hearing you say that you want there to be conversation about the ways in which the Common Core comes to life in our classrooms here in Guilford currently. Absolutely. We can have that conversation.
Very reasonable.
And, oh, I just lost my last thought. It went. I'll email it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did actually have, I was denied permission by one of my daughters to bring in one of her quizzes in, or in math, homework assignment, actually, in math. But it was actually a Common Core, it was a perfect example of what Common Core is trying to accomplish. There was what I recognized as a math problem, which was...
That was the beginning. That was the start, Bill.
No, no. But it was, but it was kind of a classic math problem. But it had an element of reasoning that, and at the end, it was explain your answer and explain how you could have got to that answer in a different way. Now, that's exactly what we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
And to try to deepen critical thinking. And now, it didn't look like my math homework in seventh grade because my math homework in seventh grade was just do a bunch of problems, right?
Right.
And, and so, anyway, that's, I think, I think that's a discussion that we need to have as a community. Arguably, should have been led by the state, oh, I don't know, three years ago when they adopted the Common Core. But that's not where we are anymore. So, let's just deal with...
And we can, and we can have that conversation here.
Okay.
I think the sooner, you know, the sooner we schedule this forum and get things going, the better. And I think, you know, Dr. Freeman, when I met, when I think Ted was with me possibly, when we met with you back in the summer about becoming board of ed members, and I think something that stuck in my head that, you know, precedes you, but that Guilford, as a parent, it seemed like we often put the cart before the horse and things would happen. And parents wouldn't have a very clear picture of what was happening. And then, there was, you know, a whole series of explanations and questions that came after. And I think it was always my perception as simply a parent that we needed to do a better job informing parents before things started to change. And I think that that is, you know, one of the roots of this. You know, I don't know that I have an entire day go by without talking about this with somebody somewhere. So, whether we're getting emails or not, there's a huge pile of questions and concerns that I think we would be well-served to talk about before another change, before, you know, we do something.
But I understand the problems with doing something before because oftentimes, people aren't at interested. And they're not coming, they don't come out to meetings. I mean, we've all been to meetings supposedly with parents that there's a half a dozen people there, and it goes no further. But you, the parents don't really have the questions until you're right in the middle of it.
So, they start to experience, right.
And you're trying to help your kid with his homework.
Yes. You're exactly right.
And that's the, some of the problems with pre-preparing because the parents aren't yet invested in it. They really don't, and many don't come out. They're, they don't, you know, they're, they're not on the same wavelength, so to speak. But, so it has to be kind of a continuum, explanation, a continuum of meeting with parents.
Much?
I have lots of questions.
Okay. Why don't we just take a short break then? Let Mr. Graziano change the tape. Search and search the disk or whatever it is.